Take a motion to, if you're ready for a motion, sir, to approve the new travel and training line item for ways and measures due to the oversight at budget time.
Yes.
Sorry.
Motion by Pam, second by John Myers. All those in favor?
Hi.
I pose.
Most curious. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
All right. Item C two, drug court adult.
Hi. Sheena Johnson Court Administrator. Do you have any questions about the request? I put a little explanation in the letter, but you recall that this is a grant that we received kind of by surprise and made some edits to make it more useful for us, I guess, after the fact. It's a four-year grant.
Sheena, this is the one we spoke of last month when you were here.
That's correct. Yes. And I think we've even made changes since then, but here we are.
Yeah. We knew you would be back to reappropriate some of these items because you weren't sure it was such a last minute thing. Is this the, this is the one?
It's the same grant. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
And these are new positions.
Yes. We did provide job descriptions.
Okay, and you have developed a job description, but has that job description went for ranking?
It has not. So we decided to leave that up to your discretion, whether or not you wanted to send it to Wagner or Sheila, since that comes out of your budget. So.
I don't, that's not a problem if we're coming out of our budget, but for consistency, and there's others requested tonight. And for the previous council members may not be aware, but one of the things that we have done and tried to do over the last couple of years is have Irwin and associates. When there's a job description that is changed, that they do a ranking to let us know how it fits into our system that we have for different positions. And I appreciate that you've done the writing of the summary, which is ninety percent of the work that they have to do, but I suggest that this and others for consistency be submitted to Irwin for review. I'd like to have a discussion on that.
So these are not going into retro to any date, right?
There's just approved. No, they're not retro.
Okay. And is there kind of an immediate need to fill these positions?
There is, yes.
Yeah.
Um, I, I wonder if it could, said something could be submitted to Wagner and Sheila for consideration at your budget, a budget time? I don't know. That way, at least they'd have a classification.
Even if you submitted it now, it might not be ready until by your time. So. And have you checked with other counties? There's a lot of counties that do the jobs, the job descriptions with this same company that may already have one that you can compare to what you wrote, just until you get the new one.
Yeah, we haven't, we did not check with other counties. I'm not sure if there are other counties locally that have these positions that are pretty specialized for our problem solving court. So I, but I didn't check. So.
It's my idea.
Well, and, and the suggestion of the request of the salary increase is not a modest increase. It is a ten thousand dollar increase, which is over a.
We, yeah, we originally had budgeted for two forty thousand dollar full-time positions. Um, after kind of looking at it again, we realized that we had a fifty thousand dollar position and a forty-two thousand dollar position. And that coupled with the lack of services that we're getting from Cardinal, which closed very suddenly in, in mid-January. But so we were reducing our professional services because Cardinal doesn't exist anymore. Um, and well, not in Johnson County anyway. And I'm trying to increase the services by having these two individuals on our staff. Bringing it in-house, so to speak, so we have a little more control.
The one's a coordinator and the other one's just a manager.
Um, yeah, so there's a peer mentor coordinator who will, if we have volunteers to, to do this peer mentorship, which some of the people who come for the problem solving courts do have an interest in mentoring their peers when they come through successfully. Um, so if they want to volunteer to come back, this peer mentor coordinator, one of their responsibilities would be to keep track of the volunteers, so to speak. And then the specialist is actually someone who has a specialty, if you will, in peer recovery. They have created their own, was it called? Angela, sorry, recovery. Recovery Out Loud, thank you. Yeah, Recovery Out Loud is the name of his program. Um, he actually gave his testimony at a problem solving court a few weeks ago and it was pretty compelling. So we're looking forward to having him on as the specialist.
Yeah, going through a lot of changes, aren't we?
Yes, we are. I need to feel better though.
Yes, and so I throw my support towards this at this point in time. I think it's important. We support these positions. An entertaining motion.
My suggestion isn't that we're not supporting the position. It's just that the position be ranked the proper the proper salary offering.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm not, not in support of it, but I've been in support of. I mean, because what we do is if we establish that at fifty thousand, then we've established that for the next budget in fifty thousand.
Right, I understand. And I, I think, I mean, we did provide some information to you that we think justifies that salary. That doesn't mean that it couldn't go through the rigors of that Wagner and Sheila would put it through and, and assign it a category so you could more properly decide where it belongs for next time. I think that we had a concern with like a horse before the cart kind of thing. Uh, we didn't want to usurp your authority to just go have you pay for a job description. But we didn't want to come empty handed either. So we came with the job descriptions and left, kind of leave it to your authority, what you want to do as far as running it through the consultant.
Well, I have a suggestion here for council to, we've, uh, we're going through some changes too. And so when we ask of, or when someone comes before us with an additional appropriation, we were asking some items be addressed and also we can add to that, uh, just a checkbox. Has this been, you know, have, do we have a job description for this position? So we'll, we'll change our formalities too.
Okay.
Except for.
Well, again, I think, you know, whenever we have a change in job descriptions, that we need to have that ranked as part of the process. And this came up last year. And, but especially when we have one that is going that major increase. So I mean, I don't think that, yeah, like you said, it's a chicken and the egg thing that what, what is the alternative to?
I mean, I guess the alternative is, is creating a longer timeline for these things, which of course we're already on a pretty long timeline when we're trying to get people hired. But if, I mean, I guess you could have us come twice.
What?
I mean, you could have us come twice and ask for permission to get the job description from Wagner, Erwin, Sheila. Because we're spending your money at that point. It's a hundred, what, a hundred and thirty bucks a job description?
Yeah, it, it's minor compared to whether or not this is accurate of a ten thousand or ten thousand dollar increase.
Yeah, if those are going to be your procedures, then that, you're free to set those forth.
Department heads or elected officials should be just going out and doing job descriptions with the company without our approval.
I agree. I mean, they did make a suggestion of a job description, which that helps that, you know, that is submitted to Irwin, then Irwin reviews a job description and says it makes sense, or we need to modify it. But I'm more concerned about the ranking of the position at the salary levels, what I'm talking about, John.
Can we approve the position subject to these salary rate or the ranking of the position? Can we go ahead and approve it? And then subsequently do this ranking?
I mean, my concern on my end is that, you know, we do have people in mind for these positions and we would like to get them on board as soon as possible. And we have to be able to be certain about the amount that they're making because obviously they'd be leaving somewhere to come to us. And it's not fair for them not to have the benefit of knowing that. So.
Okay, so without further discussion.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Motion by John Myers.
And I'll make a second.
Second by Melinda Greasmer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, can I clarify? Does that mean that we're not going to proceed? With, with the justification for the verification of the salary position?
I think we talked about our last year a little bit about having it go through the commissioners because we only meet once a month. They meet twice a month. If they need approval. I think the commissioners look at our best interests. If the council's okay with that, I'd be okay with the commissioners authorizing that.
Authorizing what?
To send it to Irwin.
Do we have to have the commissioner's approval? Can the president authorize sending it to Irwin for review?
Yes.
I don't know why we'd need to have the commissioner's approval. I'm asking.
I think, yeah. Well, so we were having a quick sidebar. So are you, you wanting just to basically designate the commissioners to help the department heads just expedite?
I'm saying, I don't know why we need to have the commissioners do that. Why can't we authorize the president to authorize the hundred and ten thou, hundred and ten thousand, the hundred and ten dollars, the action by Irwin to classify the position? We don't need to have the commissioners do that. I don't see why they have to do it.
So just designate John T. to sign off?
Yeah, is there, you know, the window department heads have, have positions like this where they need to have where it used to be barbed. In this case, it would be John T. President.
Well, you know, here, here's the thing. We had a process in place. They go to the commissioners first. So it should be done at that time or prior to the meeting with the commissioners.
No.
No, we don't, we're partying over to the, to the commissioners or something like this.
Understood. Okay. I'm talking about department heads.
Yeah. Not a salary question.
Okay. All right. So, you know, by consensus of the council, you want me to ask?
I, I wouldn't make the motion that John T. authorized the, the, the ranking for the position. Is that clear what I'm asking for?
I think so. You're just trying to delegate the authority to John, to the president.
Right. To proceed.
To verify.
To ask, to ask the committee to, to ask Irwin and associates to rank the position where it would be in our salary ordinance.
I think that'd be, yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty clear.
He would expedite the process. That's fine.
Right. That's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, you have to take a motion to do that, but.
So by consensus. Everyone agreed to that? Okay, let's move on. Items. Next item is supplemental adult probation services twenty-one oh one.
Hi, Angela Morris, Director and Chief Probation Officer of Johnson County Court Services. I sent my request with a brief explanation, and I know I've spoken to a couple of you. Um, I would ask that this is retro to January twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-three. And I'm happy to answer any questions in my house.
I have a few, Angela. I haven't spoken to you, so.
Okay.
I have a couple, just, just for my clarity. I know that you've got this classified as supervisor, supervisor, supervisor.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I get confused with the new structuring as to what department has a manager and assistant manager, a co-manager, a supervisor, a shift leader. So I get really confused. So I guess I'm asking from you. I don't know if everybody else needs it, but I would like to have a breakdown of the hierarchy of everyone that are in these three sep, it's three separate divisions or three separate entities, correct?
Correct. Do you want me to send, send you organizational chart?
However you want to do it to make me understand. When you say supervisor, I can look at my list and see that it applies to this line item. How much they're making, what responsibilities they had, what responsibilities have increased. You know, is this going to sustain this in the future? Why didn't we address it at budget time? You know, those kind of questions are really important to me.
Sure.
When, when looking at this. So those are some of the questions when I had, I read your letter and it does say what you want, but I have no idea who it's going to, why now, why not before?
As you know, um, the court services started restructuring last March. And then, so these three supervisors are new, new supervisors. So we didn't have them in the past. So there was no mid-level supervision within probation. There's approximately thirty-four employees. We put a supervisor over each court. They have about ten people under them each. And then the five thousand is per the salary schedule, the state mandate for probation officers.
And I thought that's what it was, but I, I did not.
I didn't come up with that number. It's statutorily mandated. So another reason we pull it out of the twenty-one oh one, which is the supplemental fund. And I know last year and we did the same for an assistant chief and a field officer supervisor. And I believe John Ed asked that we keep that in the twenty-one oh one for this year's budget also, which we did and would plan to with these also.
But moving forward, just for my benefit, if, if we could give a little more explanation, because I have a hard time keeping who's where, when, what, why, and what's new.
Absolutely. I can send you the organizational chart that we're, we're just solidifying this now due to, we haven't even been in business a year yet.
Right. And, and the, and the fact that this is mandated by the state makes all the difference in the world. You just didn't suddenly say, oh, there are supervisors now, so I'm going to give them five.
But I also wanted to lead with an explanation.
Right.
As to why we need it more than just that.
Right, right. So I would appreciate it for me.
Can I add that information as well?
I, I concur with both of them. I would appreciate that information too. Now, um, I did have a question. Uh, you're asking for this to be made retroactive, and I kind of have a problem with that. Is that state mandated as well to make it retroactive? Because I kind of felt like this should have been done last summer.
Well, I, I don't disagree with you. Um, I would just ask for some grace given due to the court services not even being a year old and us focusing mostly on community corrections over the past year and then restructuring. Um, I wasn't taking into consideration the calendar year, so to speak, when we putting in some new mid-level management.
So we're looking at a bi-weekly pay of hundred ninety-two, thirty-one times three, so approximately.
Yeah, coming out of our fee count, so.
Are, and are these positions filled?
They're already, I didn't hire new people. These people receive new titles.
Okay. So these are going to individuals that are already under our employ?
Correct. Yeah, they're three veterans within three probation officer veterans. Fifteen years, about fifteen years each for each one.
Well, I'll make my motion to approve, but not make it metro, retroactive. I think we have to be fair about it.
How long have they been a supervisor?
Do what?
How long have they been a supervisor?
Um, since January twenty-sixth.
Was it, the position wasn't there last year? They were doing something else?
Um, they were, they were still probation officers. Um, but they now, we just created these three court leveled supervisors. And so, correct, as of January twenty-sixth, they started this.
So will this increase their responsibilities or just change the title?
Uh, their responsibilities have increased quite a bit.
Okay.
Angela, what was your statement about retroactive to when?
January twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-three. Yeah, that was the second pay, I believe, or second pay.
So we're talking about, uh.
I thought many days ago.
Six hundred dollars.
Will that date work, Amy?
Pay date. So the work, it would be the work day, you're right. So.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I, I'm confused on the motion. Is it retroactive or is it not retroactive?
Not, not retroactive. I mean, because if it just started January twenty-sixth.
So I have a motion on three A, B, and C. Do I have a second? So not hearing a second. Motion fails. All right, further discussion?
This is a fee-based account, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept A, B, and C under this item for adult probation, retroactive January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
I have a motion by Pamela Burton.
Second.
Second by Ron Dear. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reassessment, twelve twenty-four, item. Four.
Evening, Mike Watkins, County Assessor. Got three items to go over this evening. The first two are in reassessment. The third's in the assessor account. Letter A is replenishing the payroll line for the appeal administrator. Uh, we had to take a fair amount out of overtime due to a couple of retirements that had vacation payouts at the end of the year. And so that we can have that account paid through the end of the year, so that person can draw their salary. We're just wanting to transfer money out of overtime back into that payroll line.
I'll make a motion to approve item four A, B, C, D.
No, there's, no, there's other items that need to be discussed on there.
I can still make a motion though.
I'm sorry, yes ma'am.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve for A, B, C, D, and E as listed on the agenda. And as discussed prior on the phone.
Motion by Melinda Greasmer. Have a second. Not hearing a second. Motion fails. Further discussion, please.
Okay. Your, the overtime is fairly clear. The request to transfer funds is to replace a vacation payout. That's item eleven, item, that's eleven thousand, correct?
Yes, the eleven thousand sixty-four dollars.
Okay.
That is split between the appeal administrator position of three thousand two forty-nine and the county appraiser position of seven thousand eight hundred fifteen.
And they increase item two, explanation two, is to increase employee's salary.
That would be items B, C, D, and E. Yes. I haven't brought that up to discuss here yet.
And the purpose of that is your justification for doing that?
Last year when.
What item are we on? Have we left the overtime discussion and now we're entering into item B? Is that what we're doing?
We're on item.
So, yes.
C four.
You're on four. We just discussed the overtime.
He just asked about B.
Okay, so B is what we're discussing now?
GIS manager, data analyst.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, so the GIS manager and data analyst. What we're requesting is a not retroactive to the beginning of the year, five thousand dollar increase to that person's salary. Reasoning behind that, little over a year ago, there was a software shift the, between a couple of offices. We did have a program that interacted almost constantly with the program that we use in our office. The shift took it to a program that interacts once a day when we import data. Meaning, we went from what's called an integrated system to, well, my predecessor called it a disintegrated system. And when we made that shift, it led to a, a few difficulties with our program bringing the daily imports in. And we went from having the daily imports take a few seconds per day to potentially taking an entire day or more based off of whatever the changes were coming from the other office that had made the program shift. There was one particular day, over eleven hundred items came through in one single day. Each one would have had to have been manually looked at and maintained and updated, which would have been quite seriously multiple days of work if they were done manually. We have an employee on our staff who is very technically proficient. And went, or has been and still is continuing to go above and beyond their job description. And went or has been and still is continuing to go above and beyond their job description. Their description does not include maintaining a database or this database. It does not include. Writing the scripts and the programs to make these programs interact with each other. We have worked back and forth with the companies of both of the programs. And it came down to more or less, we're doing what we can to make it work. Um, because this is so far above and beyond their job description, they have turned that eleven hundred item. Day down to something that takes a few minutes per day instead of multiple days.
So you're just moving, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I have investigated on the outside of if this were a county employee, if we had to. Go outside and find these skills. We would likely be looking at probably eighty-five to ninety thousand dollars a year to replace this. Now, as full disclosure, uh, the current salary for this person is fifty-two thousand seventeen out of the assessor's budget. This person also draws a line out of the auditor's line of eleven thousand five forty-eight. And I am for projects that they do for that office. And we're asking for, out of the the reassessment budget, an additional five thousand dollars to account for the. Change in job description. Now, we have not yet gone before the company that writes our job descriptions. I have every intention of getting that her job description updated and asked to be approved by them. With whatever procedure the uh, the council and commissioner set for.
Okay, so you're just moving eleven thousand sixty-four dollars from the overtime account?
This is a different thing that we're talking about right now, if I'm following correctly.
I was just gonna summarize it.
Oh, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No.
I'm sorry for interrupting.
Uh, we're just moving eleven thousand sixty-four dollars from the overtime account to cover the um. Additional fees for the um. The management position, the IT management position, just moving money from one account to another.
Yes, that is item A.
Uh huh, that's A. And then in B.
Yes.
Um, you're looking at in that three thousand eight hundred forty-six dollar increase.
Right, that would be the equivalent of the five thousand dollars to be effective the uh, March ninth, twenty twenty-three payday. I'm not asking for that to be retroactive to the beginning of the year.
Okay, and then you have to then match social security and then the perf.
Right.
To cover it. So, yeah, I mean, it makes sense to me, so.
So if I could interject myself in here as a functional electorate, because I remember the discussions between the auditor. And the treasurer and the assessor. And the audit, the auditor and the treasurer were were. They bought this new software and it's been very helpful.
And yes, it has.
And it didn't, and it didn't quite mesh with, you know, the prior assessor and. So now we're looking at, you know, doing some things to make it work, some changes. And and uh. If we buy software that would really do what it needs to do, we're talking about a significant amount of money, correct?
Correct. And that may be something that comes in the future.
Yes. So. Once again, I would like to.
Mike, I have a couple questions.
Yes, could I finish?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were looking at me to speak, excuse me.
No, so what I would like to do is just put my support behind it. Because this person is saving this money right now. I know we expect everyone to go above and beyond the call of duty, but she's been summoned to do things that she wouldn't have normally been.
One hundred percent correct, yes.
Okay.
When you made the motion to approve it, so.
Yeah, go ahead, Pam, I'm sorry.
Yeah, when you looked at me, I apologize. I I thought you.
You were part of the software.
Yeah, so the extra ti- and and I don't think we're supposed to mention this person's name, but.
Like, we're giving the race to the position, not the person.
Right, but I have worked with the person working in that line item.
Yes.
Very much what you're doing is deserved. Uh, but I do wanna, for full disclosure. Any over, has she been paid out of overtime as well when the additional hours were needed?
When she goes over the thirty-seven and a half per uh, per week, yes, she is paid out of overtime.
Okay, so she's she's been compensated for her extra work.
She has, yes.
Okay, and then you'll address this again at budget time?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Oh, okay.
Okay, further discussion?
Yeah, John, I got a quick question. Um, just follow up on what you said. Had had the previous assessor. Wanted to participate in the software upgrade, would that have been a viable uh, decision at the time to join the assessor and treasurer?
The program that the auditor and the treasurer now use. The that company, to the best of my knowledge, does not have a canvas system and a and assessor software. So there was no option to follow along with that company. They only have a tax side, not an assessment side.
But there is an option available, as I understand.
Yes, there are other options out there that are certified to operate inside the state of Indiana. And as a responsible office holder, I am doing everything I can to learn if that may be of the better direction for us to go. That is, that is not something that, or it is something that is in the very, very earliest stages of even thinking about right now.
Could be a short-term solution because we're addressing the symptom and not the cause.
Right, yeah, it's, it is short-term.
Well, so we're going into a salary. Level that is not short-term. I mean, I I get that and I agree with that.
And and that's my point that that if that has not been analyzed. That maybe it should be more, maybe it should be less, but without getting an urban review. We're just taking a subjective, and I'm not being disrespectful of your suggestion. But, you know, we're not using what we have as a resource to verify that that is inaccurate. Because it impacts the salary next year. Uh, and I I'm just, you know, for those of you who are new, you know, I'm just one that says. Consistently, we should have an outside review of. An increase in positions when it comes to an increase in responsibility. Not saying the individual and the position isn't warranted, it's saying is the position warranted?
Well, I guess I kind of disagree. I I I trust the local people on the ground to make the decision more than I do somebody on the outside. Who who doesn't have a, who's not involved on the day-to-day. So I I and I'm not the type to nickel and dime people over something. I mean, if she's done the work and she's a valuable employee and she does have additional work duties, that's why I made the motion to go ahead and proceed. I I think nickeling and diming isn't gonna do anything. I mean, and that's what it amounts to.
For the record, I don't disagree with what you're trying to accomplish.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is, long-term, what what do we do here? Because I think you're doing the right thing by rewarding her for the work she's doing. But that feels like a short-term solution, is all I'm saying.
I understand. That's a good question and a good point. What, do you have something that you can offer? I mean, what are we going to be doing in the future at budget time?
Well, I am investigating potential software alternatives right now. Again, that's in the barely, very earliest stages. I've got. Day-to-day stuff that I'm doing right now that uh, year-end, believe it or not, and the assessor's office is a little busy. And uh, that is something that I have on my list to get done. Once we get past the notices of assessment that are gonna be going out. At the end of uh, April.
Okay, good discussion. Both points well taken. And I think we have a process in effect, you know, here that we're gonna do.
I'll make another motion. To approve item four A, B, C, D, and E.
Motion by Melinda Griesmer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John Myers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed?
No.
Motion. Six, I, one, A. All right.
Okay, and the last item for me at least, uh, from the assessor budget, essentially same thing as for A was. Uh, when our first deputy retired at the end of the year, there was a payout of some vacation funds. And in order to have my new first deputy able to get a check through December. We would like to transfer the five thousand three sixty-four out of our part-time budget into the first deputy's salary line.
Move to approve as presented. Motion by John Myers.
I'll second that.
Second by Melinda Griesmer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Mike. Next is pretitle diversion program, item C six.
Hello, hello. My request here. It's very simple. Um, there was a budget that was submitted last year, the year before and year before. When I got elected, the person who followed me slashed the budget and it's for. The money. That is generated by the office. It is discretionary monies. And we are simply asking to put that back in so that we can continue to function and then work on our budget next year.
And this has been discussed prior, prior council.
Yes.
I I have.
Go ahead.
Discussion, if I may.
Yes, please.
Welcome back, Mr. Hamner.
Thank you.
Um. Did everybody else work the numbers and look at the cash values and that kind of stuff? Um, you you currently have cash unspent of ninety-seven thousand in that fund. So, and I'm not saying this shouldn't be appropriated, I will vote for that. But assuming all of that is spent, and I know that this this type of fund has money coming in. But that's gonna be almost two hundred thousand dollars and that you will be spending that basically is not there. So you're comfortable. That money.
Hundred percent, even more.
Okay, okay. One of those funds where you uh, reimburse the county at a certain point. Do you know, has that been done? And is, when it plans on being done in the future? Do you know that?
I do not know.
Okay.
I just know that this is what was in there before. And it was just cutting, a huge amount was cut out. We just want to put it back in there. This is discretionary money that. Used to be historically, and I was the one that set all this up eighteen years or thirty years ago.
I was here.
And, okay, and and back in those days, what we did was the county council would simply. Appropriate this money and then we would spend it. At some point, the council said, we'd like to see where it's going. If you could put it into a budget. So that's what we started doing. I'm sorry, I really lost my voice. Hang on just a minute. Excuse me. And so that's what we started doing. And then this budget is just multi-generations down. This is what it is. And what was submitted last time, we're just asking to put it back in there the way it was before.
And my only concern is, because I have been here as long as you or maybe, I don't know, but. There was one point, there wasn't enough money at the end. And we ended up having to pay from the general fund a substantial amount of money to cover this. So I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page and that there'll be enough money to cover what we're appropriating.
Thank you for asking. That's a good point. And it's not gonna run in the red.
Okay.
So are we just talking about six, A through K?
Six, seven. Well, ultimately, six, seven, eight, nine. We're just asking to put the same budget back we had before.
And then ten. Eleven. Or do you wanna, do you wanna address more? Do you wanna stop at some portion?
Um, I think eleven is where we end.
Okay.
I wanna back up to nine or seven, if I may. And just say that cash balance is sufficient at this point. There's enough money in there to cover that, so. Just because I pointed out it was negative for prior to that, in twenty-five oh eight, there is a, the the cash balance is there.
Thank you. You're really good on numbers. I'm, I mean, I know it's your job, but I'm impressed, but thank you for that.
Thank you, Amy.
Amy's always been really good.
Right, right.
Well, as always, there comes an amount of, a certain amount of trust to hold this. Been elected with that trust.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve um, six, seven, and eight. And then, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve those three. And then I guess we gotta talk about the nine separately.
Well, actually, he asked for nine, he asked for six through eleven.
Okay. All right, yeah, I'll make the motion then for six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven.
Okay, motion by Melinda Griesmer.
I'm sorry, but I have a couple more questions, if I may.
Yeah, wait, wait, I have a motion on the table.
Okay.
So I have a motion on the table. Second.
Second.
Second by John Myers. All in favor of.
Can I clarify something that. That didn't happen last year, and I'd like to see it happen this year, is that we're getting sort of a little backwards on our discussions. That when there's a motion and a second, that there be discussion before we take a vote. Uh, that, I know that the law doesn't require, and it seems like it's a good procedure. Because that's what Pam was attempting to do, is have further discussion. And with we having a new group here, it it sort of was done by the president that. First and second, then discussion. And I don't have a version to us proceeding with having. Act motions taking that action.
Given that, what would I do? And this is a hypothetical. We have a motion in the second. And then discussion, where do we go from there?
We have discussion and then you call for a vote after discussion.
Okay.
Is that in a proper, from our attorney?
Do that.
We, yeah.
You can do discussion after the second, and then if after discussion. Counsel decides.
Then call for the vote.
Not vote in favor of the motion as presented, and the motion dies, and you call for a discussion.
Right, as opposed to pushing.
Well, at that point in time, with the. With the item fall off of the agenda, it would be gone, take it to another.
If I might, I thought according to Robert's Rules of Order, when there's a motion and a second, there has to be a vote.
That's.
Doesn't have.
Robert's Rules of Order, it's what we follow in this county, and so.
So when, when does discussion occur?
Prior to.
Before the second.
It's what you don't know what you're discussing if there's no.
I didn't make the rules.
But but I'm, my point is, is there's no discussion. You can't have a discussion if you don't have an action that's been proposed.
I think the situation is that you just need further discussion prior to the motion to make sure everything's been covered.
So, okay.
We have Robert's Rules here. You're allowed to debate after the second, so that is allowed to be done.
And I think it's the more appropriate way to do it, because how can you discuss a motion that hasn't been made? If the motion is made. For whatever the motion is, then you have a discussion. That's what the commissioners do.
Well, even, I mean, you're discussing now before a motion is even made. You can ask the president questions on what, what you have before you, and then. At that point, if everyone's satisfied, you can move.
Well, you can ask away.
No, I'm I'm saying, for example, the commissioners, when they have an action, they'll take a motion and then they'll have a discussion, then they'll call for the vote. And I'm suggesting that we do the same.
So I keep calling for a discussion before the first motion. And I'll call, but if somebody offers a motion. Then, okay, your desire is to have discussion after the second.
Because we know what we're discussing. We don't know what we're discussing if there's been no motion.
Well, I mean, listen about doing your homework before coming in, too.
I'm sorry.
That's why we always, since I've been not always, but after the first or second, the way. Previous presidents would ask for further, any further discussions.
Yeah, and that's my point.
There's no hearing, that's when the president would ask for.
Nothing to vote on if you haven't heard it.
I stand corrected. Any further discussion on the motion in the second?
There you go.
I'm sorry, I I was literally jumping in there a while ago because I didn't want to cut somebody off. I didn't know if I, I, so. I just have a couple of simple questions, just for, just familiarizing myself. On the Voca supplement grant, the travel and training, is that new? Is that a one-time grant, Lance, or do you know?
That's a one-time grant for training travelers.
Okay, that's kind of, I I didn't recognize that. That's what I thought. And then over on the um. The five thousand dollars for the prosecutor's uh, child. the five thousand dollars for the prosecutor's, uh, child support forty, the one oh one, 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 eight. In overtime. And I could be wrong on this because I'm doing this for memory, but I thought there was like three thousand dollars in there that has not been used. And you're increasing it to five thousand. Are you anticipating something or is that just what the norm used to be? And you're bringing it back to?
That's my understanding is that's the norm and we're just bringing everything back.
Okay, so there's no need to do that other than you, you're just bringing it back to where it was.
Yep, and if it's any, as you know, if it's any consolation, the forty money gets reimbursed by the government.
Sixty-six percent, yes, yes. I'm, I'm familiar with that. I mean, that was all I had. I just wanted to
Thank you.
To make sure that that was correct.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I did have a question about vehicle repair maintenance, vehicle maintenance. What, what vehicle is the prosecutor's office?
The previous prosecutor had four vehicles. One was used to transport a dog. Now we just have three. One is for the prosecutor, the chief deputy and for the investigator.
Okay, and so that's for those three vehicles.
Yep.
Okay.
Any further discussion? It called for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else for me? I'll try to stay out of your hair.
No, you're fine.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, item nine, I'm sorry, whoops. I had a tenant for council office supplies. This is mine. This is for some stationary and also some things that we've been working on that we have not had in the past as well as some business cards for when we go to the other state called meetings and things so that we can trade our cards with other members and I think it would be helpful. Also, there's an important publication that comes out from the AIC that is a a shared data point for all of the salaries, which will help us out a great deal. We'll be able to purchase that from the AIC. And that's what this is for. Motion approved by John. Second by John Myers. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, number thirteen Casa.
Hi, I'm back. Sheena Johnson, Court Administrator, on behalf of Casa and Circuit Court. So number thirteen and number fourteen. And this is the manager here, if you have specific questions. I submitted the job description and the letter. So let, I guess, let us know if you have questions.
Yes, sir, I have one question. Imagine that, Sheena, I have a question. I don't find my letter in front of me, but for the three thousand dollars for office equipment slash furniture.
Yes.
The letter indicated for a laptop.
Yes, at least one new laptop.
One laptop is not three thousand dollars.
At least one.
We're talking three hundred dollars.
She's got some broken chairs as well. I guess I didn't.
Oh, so the letter just said.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't know she needed chairs.
Okay, all right. That's all I wanted to know.
Okay.
It's pretty expensive laptop.
Yeah, honestly, I don't even know how much they cost.
And I have a question about the assistant director. It has job category of comment, so that's already been, went through the process.
And it was, it, it went through the process as it exists as administrative assistant. So as administrative assistant, it's whatever you said comment, I don't know what level it was. But with the additional responsibilities that she's added to that job description that the, the person is performing. It's, we're in the same situation we were earlier where we don't know what category that would be in.
I was just looking at your job category, it said comment.
The job description that we submitted was cobbled together with Tammy's job description and then the admin, was it admin assistant? Job description to show that she has taken on more responsibilities. So if it has a category on it, that's left over from when it was categorized as admin assistant. It has not been submitted to Wagner Earl and Shealy.
Further discussion?
I guess I just have one question. It's not a, a discussion, but when we have personnel issues, it sounds to me like there's I, I heard, John, you said there was a process. Is there clarity around the process as far as what the expectation is of the ask when it's being made? Because we're kind of talking about job descriptions, lack of job descriptions, what's the role, all those kinds of things. Is there clarity around what the expectation is around that, that kind of detail?
No, it could use clarity and it could use procedure. And that's what we'll work on. And I've been given that task, so I will work on that. Thank you.
And, and the clarity is that there is a, if a position exists that we have at budget time. Move, take an action to proceed with an increase in salary based on what the position is, okay? If that position is not classified, then we have difficulty making a decision for future salary increase for that particular position. The process is position A exists and an individual, an department head wants to change it to position B. Which is an increase in responsibilities. Do they do one of two things? They just simply say that it should be five thousand dollars more? Or do we send it to our consultant to say that that particular position should be five thousand dollars more? Or two thousand, or a thousand, or ten thousand?
And that's, a- and again, this is where we have to be resolved as a council. Because I believe we have to trust in our public, publicly elected officials and our department heads. In our determination of these factors. So for us to just simply fall back on a salary consultant, I think, I think that should be one of the variables. But I don't think it should be the resolving factor. Am I, am I speaking out of turn?
No, I think that I completely agree with that, but you know, I mean, this is, this is kind of turning into a little bit of discussion.
No, you're fine.
It, it leads to another question I've got. We're not even forty-five days into the mid-budget year. And we're seeing personnel changes, we're seeing structure changes, we're seeing a number of things that I find myself just thinking about, were those should these have been contemplated during the budget period or what changed so dramatically?
Well, I think, I, I think when I talk about the judiciary and the prosecutor. So the judiciary, as I see it, and help me out, Sheena, because you're right in the middle of it. Uh, it's changing rapidly in how they're addressing the entire judiciary and what their responsibility is. And that's coming from the Indiana Supreme Court level on down. And it's affecting, uh, community corrections, it's affecting sheriff's department, it's affecting all the courts. And then what they're coming in with are these changes. And then to just, well, I'm not going to say just, to do it at budget time only creates an issue in, in the change.
Yeah, and I, I can speak to the previous request of, um, I had and Angela had. So, um, we received a grant for like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over four years. Um, and we were notified of that at the end of last year, so after budget time. So that's why that's coming up now and it came up a little bit last month as well. And then, no, it's fine. And then as far as Angela's request with the additional five thousand, those are just growing pains in my opinion. So as far as court services has been structured and she'll send you that chart. She just, it was prudent to add that second level of supervising. Oh, I understand.
Where it's not statutory, which sounds to me like in some cases it is, it's mandated, right?
Well, yeah, go ahead.
But nevertheless, if that's the case, that's one thing. But if it's, hey, I think I'm going to restructure my, my department. Then it seems to me like that ought to be a budgetary item and maybe delayed until the new new budget year, if, if it can be enough, so, you know, if the barn's on fire or something, that's a little different story, but if, if it can be, uh, it, it doesn't feel like that's the, the way it ought to, ought to work in my mind.
No, and it's point well taken and I think we are all in agreement with John.
And those are the guidelines set forth by the Department of Local, uh, Government and Finance, that they be followed as well. So what you're saying is, is, and there's always going to be barns on fire.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did send out a thing to all the council members, I think, that came from the DLGF. Did you all get a copy of that? That is about additional appropriations and the procedure for that. So, uh, we're, I think, well, we are following that to the T right now, but all right, so further discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Uh, item Casa, our goal Casa, A is A, B and C. Retro one, two of twenty-three for the pay.
One twelve.
One twelve, excuse me, twenty-three for the pay. Noting the three thousand dollars is more for than just one laptop.
Yes, sorry.
And then do we want to address item fourteen with just the administrative change title? Or do you want to take that separately?
Yeah.
Okay.
If it goes together, I mean, I have a couple of questions on that one. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Sheena. Just need a little more explanation on, I don't recall this being covered at budget time.
Right.
That this was going to happen and pertaining back to Mr. Dittmer, is this not something that could wait? Until budget time and, um, do we have the dollars now, but are we going to have them in the future?
No, I see what you're saying. I think, um, that the person, okay, so Casa is a two-person department.
Right.
It's Tammy and I can't remember the girl's name. Mandy, um, two-person department. So I think the thought is, you know, we've been doing Casa in Johnson County for thirty-five years. Um, when Tammy's gone, which she's not gone that often, but when she's gone, Mandy's in charge. And so I think that that's been going on for several years now and, um, that she had, saw an opportunity to kind of reflect that in the, um, salary now. And so she was going forward with that. Now as far as, um, being able to perpetuate that year after year, I think we talked about it. You said that you will be able to sustain that, right, for quite a while, she says.
So you said this has been going on for a while, but just now all of a sudden, we're going to be.
Well, I think that the opportunity came to have some, some, to use some previous grant funds that had not been missed.
Oh, gotcha.
So, um, it seemed like a good opportunity to take, you know, take advantage of that. And then, like she said, it can be sustained for the next few years. Right, at least.
So I have the same question on that, that administrative assistant to assistant director. What, have you done anything in the process on that one?
Uh, we submitted the job description to you, but we did not submit it to Wagner and Shealy. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, you, you've got the description in here.
Right.
But it's not been submitted.
That's correct.
Well, I think I have a motion on the floor for item thirteen and I'd like to just leave that on the floor for thirteen and then maybe do a separate vote for fourteen.
Okay, motion on the floor from Pamela Burton for item thirteen, A, B and C. Second by John Myers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, item fourteen, Circuit Court. Change in title. Discussion?
Pam, did you have a reason for pulling it out?
Pardon?
Do you have a reason for pulling it out?
I didn't pull it out. I just asked questions as to why we were doing it now. And I'm just not comfortable. I just, just wanted to know how everybody else felt about it. I'm okay with it. I'm just not going to make a motion.
Discussion?
We're on fourteen?
Yes. Fourteen A. Changing administrative assistant, change title to assistant director.
Well, this, um, I'm sorry. Will this eventually, um, this title change will eventually change the pay grade?
It's possible. I mean, if, if it's authorized to go to Wagner or when it's yearly. I mean, I would assume it would. There's more responsibilities.
It could, it could change on, from the consultant standpoint, but it has to go through our appropriation process.
Right.
I don't know if this will help law. I, I'm sorry, I'm Tammy Hickman, I'm the director and one of the things I, from the state Casa office, I was directed to put together a succession plan. We've never really had that before and my assistant director has been with me in this position. Administrative assistant as her title for three years and prior to that, she worked part-time in my office for three years before that. She's been a Casa volunteer for seven years and she under, she is under me. I mean, she is doing everything I'm doing for the most part. Um, and so I just want to recognize her efforts and she is my succession plan if I decide to retire. And I've been doing this for twenty-five years. I don't know how much longer I'm going to do it, so.
And thank you for what you do.
Approve the recommendation, uh, make the change from administrative assistant to assistant director.
And I'll second it.
Motion by John Dittner, second by Pamela Burton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, D and other business, board appointment to the Franklin City Economic Development Board. Thank you, Ron. Ron's pulled up here.
Economic.
So if anyone has this up, could you, uh, help guide me through this? Because I don't have my laptop open. So, John, you want to explain a little bit about this? John Dittner's, you resigning from this position due to your. So congratulations.
Yeah, the, the role of the EDC, uh, primarily is tax abatements. It's a tax abatement requests and then it's, uh, compliance.
Um, what it amounts to is, uh, you consider tax abatement requests to the city Franklin. You, uh, primarily you go through the review process for compliance for existing abatements that are in place to, to, to ascertain whether or not they're in, uh, compliance about with the original terms of the abatement. And primarily that, that's, uh, that's it. You, uh, would collect fees. We, uh, commission collects fees and then administers those to the, I think the various not-for-profits, uh, primarily, uh, by application and then consideration and decision.
And then in this letter, Mayor Barnett stated that he recommended Lisa Jones to complete Mr. Dittner's term. Which runs from two-one twenty-twenty to two-one twenty-twenty-four. Do we have any other applicants?
Yes, you're here.
Is she here?
Not present.
She's well-known and I would have no reservation about, uh, making the motion that we appoint her to the commission.
I don't know her and so I like to meet people and in the past with these boards, they have come and appeared.
That's fine, Melinda. I'm just telling you that I know her and.
I, was there a motion made?
I made a motion. I made a motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Motion by John Ditter, second by Pamela Burton. All those, or further discussion, I'm sorry, further discussion.
I just want to say, I don't know this Melissa Jones either, but I do see that she's a CPA with Jones and Anderson and she also comes recommended by the mayor. And Mr. Dittner, so I feel comfortable with, with her recommendation.
Further discussion? Call for the vote. All those in. Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
For the, for the new members of the council, when we do have a person who is interested in an appointment, has been our responsibility to ask them to come. And then the ones who are applying outside of going through one of us, uh, we're asking them through the, through Amy that they come. So we see the individuals there. I think that's a tremendous idea. I never was asked. I just continue to be appointed.
Kevin, get you on that too?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then by consensus, I think at the last meeting, I, if you could just pass this and go through it, uh, when we have these board members that are appointed, I've asked them for a small report or some type of reporting to us at the time of their meeting, not, not in the effect of, uh, being counsel, or I'm sorry, meeting minutes, but of any action that they just felt like we would be required to be knowledgeable about. And so I will be doing that. And it, Melinda, if you could pass that down and let the other members review that letter.
Yeah.
If so, I'll, I'll forward that to our newly appointed.
I think it's a good idea.
All right, so next on the agenda is approval of the Fifth Amendment to the Johnson County Police Retirement Plan. Andy, please.
Hi there. Andy Barnhart, Chief Deputy of the Sheriff's Office. I believe all the documents were provided. Is that correct about the amendment? It's the same as we've done, the sheriff has done, uh, for the past uh, at least sixteen years or twenty years, I believe. Same plan.
Hey, anything you want to add or discuss?
It's paid for out of our commissary funds. Doesn't cost the general fund anything.
Okay, discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fifth Amendment to Johnson County Police Retirement Plan. Item two, under other business.
Second.
Motion to approve by Pamela Burton, second by John Mahlers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next is approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash oh-one. An ordinance creating a fund for the county attorney, animal control deferral program. Adam, could you address it?
Yeah, so this will just allow the, our office Tiffany to essentially more efficiently manage animal control violations. They're the predominant county ordinance that we deal with when it comes to violations in our office. It's more efficient for the citizens because it'll burn time off from work or miss work to appear for these essentially pre-trial hearings. It'll likely lead to a higher rate of collections for the county, which is always a good thing. And also is more efficient from a judicial resource as well, I think. So it just allows us just to do it a referral program like the prosecutor's office has for different infractions.
We don't have to do a public meeting for this or anything, do we?
No.
Discussion. I'll move to approve as presented.
Was that John?
Yes.
Dittner's techno's done.
John Myers. I'll second. All right. Motion approved by John Myers, second by John Dittner's. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is the item that we added to the agenda, and it is for the plan, commission, board, BZA. Alternate position. So the prior fellow that had, uh, been approved by council prior has resigned. And now it's been recommended by Michelle Hansard, who is the director, that we appoint Paul Claude Felter, who was on our list at that point of the last meeting. Melinda, you had a, uh, you had a motion to have him approved at a prior year. So Mr. Claude Felter has served a year already or served.
I think he's the incumbent.
Yeah, he's, he's, he's the incumbent. So he is now the applicant for this. Open for discussion. And this is for the appointment of Mr. Paul Claude Felter, and he is not present. Is that true? Anybody online?
Mich- Michelle Hansard's online for the Director of the Planning and Zoning Commission, if you have any questions for myself.
Okay, thanks, Michelle.
I believe this is, Michelle, I believe this is your recommendation with Mr. Claude Feltner, correct?
Correct. He's been our alternate for several years.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Claude Feltner as the BZA alternate.
Second.
Motion by Pamela Burton, second by John Myers. All in favor signify. Further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Michelle. All right.
Thank you.
So the next one is old and new business, and this is one that we're all proud of. But we'll get a little update here from the CIT team. I'll step forward. I don't have any plaques because the commissioners beat me to it, so.
Hello, everybody. Deputy Jimmy Mark, Johnson County Sheriff's Office Crisis Intervention Team. Uh, we're just here to give you a little bit of update. Um, I don't know how much all of you know about our crisis intervention team. Uh, we started full-time in August of twenty-twenty-two, uh, doing mental health response. We respond to mental health calls, and we also do follow-up on the mental health calls. We have been blessed by not only the council, but the commissioners and, um, our sheriff, chief deputy, and Angela Morris and our, um, judges to start working on the mental, mental health problems we have in Johnson County. And we started in, like I said, in August of twenty-twenty-two, full-time and responding. And I'm going to have Shannon step up here and give you some numbers, uh, when it comes to that. But, um, just want to talk about how important that this is and how much has made a difference just in the time that we've been doing it. It's made a huge difference, and our, our job is to keep people, um, that need help out of the justice system, the criminal justice system. And we feel that that's definitely happened here in Johnson County. And again, we'll give you some numbers here in just a second, but, um, this is something I'm very passionate about, and I know this whole team is. And I just want to say thank you from the bottom of our hearts, uh, for your support in this team and what we're doing. Um, and we also thank the sheriff and the chief and, and everybody that's, that's been involved in getting this started, uh, because we know it's making a difference. So I'll turn it over to them with some numbers and then while I answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir.
So we provided you with, um, our fourth quarter recap and the twenty-twenty-two hearing report.
Excuse me, could you, as you guys come up, could you tell?
I'm sorry, Shannon Chambers. Um, so in twenty-twenty-two, we had a total of two-hundred-and-forty-two calls that the CIT team responded on. Um, or that we had contact with, whether that be deputies sending us a report, asking us to follow up with those people, or us going out directly with them to relieve the officers so that they could go back on, um, duty and take other calls. Already this year, um, we're on pace to probably match that or not, if not beat that. We've already had twenty-five calls this year. Um, and those average, the average time on those are anywhere from an hour to eight hours. This morning, we were on one for four hours. So that's four hours that a deputy can go back out onto the street and do the other things that, there are other duties where we are taking those calls for them. In addition to, um, the data that I gave you in the report, we also do CIT training. And we are one of the, um, thirteen, fourteen counties in the state of Indiana that have a CIT certified education program. So we offer that four times a year. So in twenty-twenty-one, um, we, we had just started. So we had forty-eight people trained in those classes, and that was with seven departments. In twenty-twenty-two, we trained a hundred-and-thirty-eight people. Nineteen agencies and six of those agencies were out of county. So we have other counties from around the state sending their people to us to get trained. Um, we've also been invited for, in the next couple of months, Decatur County has reached out as well as Henry County, asking us to come and speak with them and show them what program Johnson County has done and the things we've done here so that they can try to basically duplicate our program in their counties. Anybody have any questions?
Oh, a million of them, but I don't know if I'm going to get them tonight.
I don't know which one of you might want to do it, but I think it wouldn't hurt for you to give an explanation to where the funding came for this.
Uh, this was a, the funding for this did not come out of the general fund of the county, and this was done by the ARPA committee as part of the ARPA funds from the federal government. So that was, uh, one of the blessings that allowed us to get started early on this and utilize those funds, uh, to do something that we would have otherwise had to try to figure out how to do from the general fund that the county is paying for and the taxpayer is paying for. And that, of course, is something that will have to be looked at in the future. But at least for the, uh, for the interim, for three years or two and a half years, that funding is, is taken care of, and we don't have to worry about, about that locally. And that's a, that's a big deal, as we all know. Especially when we're talking about the amount of money that we are and the amount of resources it takes to deal with mental health. And I just want to briefly say too that, uh, there has been a, in the short period of time that they've been doing this, a culture shift in law enforcement. And it's amazing to see, I've been doing this for twenty-four years. I've been in law enforcement. And to see the, uh, the change of when we've had to deal with mental health issues going from sort of a, what we call like a catch and release, or it's just something we, we dealt with because we had to, and we weren't really sure what to do with people. And if they didn't commit a crime, we didn't really know what to do. We had a few numbers we could try, but it was, we were really just, uh, just leaving these people out to fend because that's not a part of what law enforcement was meant to do. It's not what it was designed to do. But that, that has shifted over the years. And because these mental health calls are becoming more and more common, it's been amazing to see now that the officers that have been doing this for, with, with hundreds of years of experience shifting to relying on our CIT team to take care of these people. And to know, it's, it's a nice thing to know that you're not just releasing them back out into the wild with no resources, that they're being, uh, taken care of and followed up on, and that it's not just a problem that you're, that you're postponing to deal with another time. So that's been a major shift in law enforcement here locally. So much, so much so that the Indiana Supreme Court and other counties have reached out to our CIT team to present throughout the entire state of Indiana to be the lead on that. And, and that's an amazing thing to see. And it's because of the, the commissioners, the council and the ARPA committee that we're able to do this.
And just so that they understand the numbers that from, came from ARPA. What's, I don't have them committed to memory, five-hundred thousand, was it? This year?
Five-hundred thousand in twenty-twenty-two for the remainder of that. And then I think a million for each of the other two years, I believe.
I think that's what it was.
Yeah, and then that included also some space for them.
That's correct. And that project is underway. Uh, it was going through some initial drafting last year. And I believe that'll be coming before bid, uh, before too awful long. The architects are almost finished with the, the small addition to our building to house our CIT.
And then that also included supporting them with vehicles and everything they needed, so.
And that's all ARPA funded.
And it was the, the one thing that we pointed out with ARPA funds that the purpose of ARPA funds was to make substantial change to the community. And it's one of the things I personally believe we have done that has made a substantial change, not only to our communities, but to others throughout their.
This isn't just a lip service thing where we can say, oh, look what we've done and some numbers on paper. These are actual lives that have been affected and bettered and saved because of these people standing behind us.
And you.
I just want to mention one more thing. Um, we do four classes a year, uh, our CIT training. And we would welcome all of you to come to that training, uh, even just come and sit in and listen to a little bit of it. And if you want to join, uh, join the whole class, it's a forty-hour week. Uh, so I know it takes a lot of time, but, um, I know, uh, John has been through the class and he's enjoyed that class. So.
I don't know if enjoyment is the word.
You did the whole forty hours?
It was earth shaking.
Yeah. We bring live experience, uh, lived experience folks in and talk about their experience with law enforcement, how they dealt with their mental illness and, and dealing with law enforcement. And we have, um, a lot of people come in and just talk about different aspects of the, of the mental illness that we deal with. So it's a really good class. And just if you can maybe just come by and just swing by for maybe a little bit and just check it out.
Jim, would you kindly send an email when that?
Yes.
That starts.
I'll send you an email with the, uh, I'll send it to Amy, and then Amy can forward it to all of you with the dates for the remainder of the year.
Thank you. And thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
I highly recommend taking the whole course. It's a good course, very educational.
So this is the tip of the spear.
Yep.
Thank you very much for all your due.
Thank you.
So that concludes this meeting. Entertaining a notion. Who would have thought? If I have any, uh, okay, do you have this, this list here? Uh, I made some mistakes on Mr. Deere's section, but I have corrected those. All those CC numbers or CC funds and grants are, are under court services per their request. And then shifted parks to Mr. Deere. So I think that everyone has a like number of funds, and that's what I was after, because each fund represents a contact at some point in time. So that if anybody, I mean, this is just thrown it down on paper, and it doesn't preclude anybody from contacting anybody or anybody, any of you from contacting anybody. Uh, this is just merely a means, uh, to get to know a lot of times. But what would be helpful is if, uh, I can send this out to all of you and you could send back to me your contact name and number for each one of these funds or whatever at some point in time in the future, and I'll work on that also. But, uh, I guess what I'm looking for here is a consensus from council. And once again, you're welcome to trade and, uh, do, uh, what you want to do with this.
So what are the numbers to the side?
The fund numbers. And Amy, is that changed? I mean, are those numbers changing or? Yeah, because I have, I've had my hand in it and it may be wrong. Okay. All right, so my council, uh, everybody okay with it or not? Are you disappointed?
The new members understand what luggage on function is.
So entertaining a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that first motion to adjourn this meeting.
I think that's forgotten.